Those have a place with the then old age and forgetting to Good job.
All right, seven P M. And I the Columbia Board of Selectment order Tuesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty two. This is a hybrid public meeting, the public and independent person electronically. The information provided is agenda is contain the link to the access to be electronically or it's Columbia C T dot org. And we'll monitor for chat, we monitor for any questions during the public input, please be respectful. First order in business, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which same as Okay, I'm going to approve the agenda for the regular board selection meeting for August seventeen, excuse me. August sixteen in twenty twenty two, I don't present it. Except we need to correct. We understand that. Any changes? Any discussion? All those in favor? Board of selection and regular movement, I move to approve the regular board second minute for a meeting from August second, twenty twenty two. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Audience citizen. Anybody like to discuss anything that's on the agenda? Or since we don't usually call during the discussions on here, anybody have any input or questions? Or statements, excuse me, no questions? Anybody in the chat? No, yes, Ms. Vance.
Con Vance. And maybe I can save this till you get to it because okay, we see it down here. I'm curious what's happening now with the arrangement control and our goal is always gone. I could wait for the idea. Good deal with that. But I know that we've seen, I think, multiple concerns about the control supervision. What's happening down there and so I'm just wondering where we're going.
Okay, we'll open that while I will during the time illustrators minute report, we'll talk about that. Anyone else? Seeing none, no business, new business. So Connecticut State Archaeological State Preservation Program for the Hop River Mill Open Space Site. Discuss that more? Sure, and we have Corey, Shippo, and also Kathy is joining us by video and just for everyone's understanding Kathy La Via and and Corey are both of the state historic preservation office. And Corey would be our representative. Joan Hill has been working tirelessly at trying to preserve a section of the open space set aside that we accepted from a housing development right along the river. And half of the set aside is the original, if you look at the map. Original Top River Fort Mill was literally on half of that site. And the Susway coming on the map, you can see this. Is to the right of the Susway is a giant deal that would be what we would use the recreation for camping and picnicking and enjoying the hot river. One aspect, it's exciting and Joan and Kathy and Corey could speak to it in more detail, but by actually signing up to be part of the archaeological state preservation program. We would be the thirty eighth state archaeological preserve. There's thirty seven right now, and that comes with protection of the site. Joe would have signage and behind it, you can see the sign on this brochure, but it says that digging and metal detecting and prohibited, motorized vehicles are prohibited, violating will be prosecuted and up to a five thousand dollar fine can be issued for someone who is disturbing a state protected archaeological site. The other exciting thing is it could also come with it if we were nominated and accepted for the site to create the Hopper Mill Committee, which would be many residents. And that committee would apply for grant funding through the historic preservation office and create a that funding could be used to create a master plan through Connecticut, Central Connecticut State University capstone program. A graduate would run that whole capstone plan and it would help create a game plan for how this site could be shown to visitors that are interested in seeing an original mill site that hasn't been ruined or or anything built upon it. And there would be signage showing what the site was and what it was used for over all the centuries and why it's important. Joe and Corey or Kathy, give you more information if you'd like. So I'll open it to the board to ask questions, but I have a couple of questions. So are there any buildings or of the factory or anything like that visible?
There are ruins and the building above ground is pretty much gone. But we did all that sluice that he had the picture up there, that's still fully there with the stone arch and the stone wall and so on. And then a lot of structures actually went along the top of it. We may see we've ever gone over the tree chair, it's his wrong, has the high stone wall that runs along river. That was the way it took in the floodwater to approach behind these and so on. So there are water controls, such as shams, retaining walls and so on. And then maybe a lot more of the low ground. So what was done was after the frame building burned in the early nineteen hundreds, they tried to build a couple of brick buildings on top of the old foundations. And those bricks are gone. So, you know, close to the surface, there should be the original foundation. So basically, we'd like to reveal the footprint of the mill. You're not going to see buildings ever again on this site.
So you do vote to dig and reveal some of the foundation?
Hopefully, so my personal use is the iron works, which is very early ones, seventeen twenties. And it lies beneath some concrete improvements from the eighteen hundreds. But, you know, depending on, we have different archaeologists who are interested in what they call industrial archaeology. So they could apply to a project there. What's really great about this program is it takes out of the town's hands without tying their hands the evaluation project like that. So, you know, when it comes to the town that they want to dig on the green or something, you know, with the select will have to make a decision about whether that's a good archaeological problem or whatever the site. And now you have Corey, who's a professional archaeologist, Kathy and Stefan. Stefan is the graduate student at Central, who's going to do a project guiding us all the way through bureaucracy for all applying for state historic site designation up to getting the state archaeological preserve designation. They're all professional archaeologists, so, you know, the town doesn't have that as a net that was in the town. So I think that alone is something really that I want to be found in this program.
So is it hopes that people walk around and once it's cleared? And I understand you're doing a great job out there, but you're one person, but when this is put forward that we decide it's all going to be cleared with signage, just explaining different things and showing different, you know, drawings of a building like you have here and just explain to people what was there?
Exactly, how how water power into the great site for water power. And that's why it has known for twenty years. It had sometimes up to eight mills at a time, not all these textile mills in that picture, but the earlier mills, but it was a very small mill before it and what's it's on. So, you know, we're not sure exactly they're all there now, you know? I mean, people have been in there using the property in the last eighty years, but it looks very promising.
How about that? Was it sluice? Sluice, where they're Yeah, I know that I've been down there, I looked at it and I'd love to make it like a way for kayaks to not have to do all the
Well.
I'm not really kidding.
Kayak in your business, the hot river and those sluices, you know, don't end our property in the hot river. They go to another business property after they use that sluice, plus it's got a tail in it, so you can't really go down it. But there's another river, I think you're talking about, that was an old mill that does have water in it. It's not kayakable though.
No, 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 I know this doesn't have water in all of it.
Yeah.
Only the top side of it, there's some that's collected and it's probably bad and everything. But honestly, I didn't know if there would be any recapture or some of the stuff like clean up the stuff with the wall or the riverbed near that area or make this have running water through it again.
Well, that would be a challenge, but yeah, you know, there's there's different options, you know? Basically, anything you do, you want to stabilize it. So you've got these stone walls with these steep slopes sweeping down to it. And people have dumped stuff in there, so, you know, you gotta take out the modern fill first and see what's left. And then if you wanted to have water coming up, it'd probably come up from the hucker instead of down from the old mill site. We don't know where that underwater is coming from. It could be groundwater perking up, it could be leaking from somewhere way up above the mill. It could be coming up from the river during flood, it is standing there. So, you know, it's it's got to be investigated harder. But, you know, you could put in kayaks from the field, it's that metal in the back. It's just got a relatively steep bank and it's quite a lot of walking. So, you know, people might prefer to put in by the bridge than to go all the way down there to launch. But they could, it just, you know, as you see now, very low and dry weather and very rocky, so.
And how much of the property that we acquired? Fifty percent, would this take up fifty percent of the property?
The mill site?
No.
I'd say it's maybe sixty five percent.
Sixty five?
We have three point six acres and I'd say acre and a half at least are in that recreational area. And then this is probably have to maintain as an access road for Mr. Giuliano or Giuliano L O T or so that takes up sort of another property too. And part being I've done there enough times to see it, it's really pretty amazing. I mean, when it's all put together, I think it'd be a real strong asset for the town. People will love to go there, get a lot of people just learning about the industry from seventeen hundreds and eighteen hundreds.
First question.
I don't know if I have enough information. I mean, this is going to be one of those in perpetuity kind of things. And I don't know if we're being given enough information for me to make a decision. I would want to know pros and cons. I would want to know what the contract that we're going to do looks like and what kind of responsibilities different people have. So I don't know if there's enough information being presented to do that. I would actually even want to go take a walk. So that's me personally.
I think it's a great idea to take a walk, you get a good idea of what's there.
Yep, I'm there every morning by seven, so you can put them up before work any day.
For your cheers.
Yeah, and the other thing is Kathy Labadia is on the screen right below you. And she is the one who is the head of the department, manages these preserves. So if you're sure of she to ask questions because I don't have the expertise, she does, so.
Well, I would just, I would like to see the contract that we would be signing as a town. You know, there's there has to be a contract in here and, you know, who's responding now then?
There's there's there is no contract. What it is, is it's a program and it's designed to be able to share archaeology with the public, but at the same time provide some protections for the archaeological site so that people are not doing their own excavations or, you know, going in there with metal detectors. And so this is how the program works is, and this is what Stefan is offering to do for free through his program, is we do documentation of what exactly is out there. So identifying all the features that we would consider archaeologically significant or important. Put that map together, put the history together and then define what the boundaries of the preserve are. And this would get passed through our Historic Preservation Council, which meets once a month. And what the requirement on the town's end would be is to place this easement. And I can, what I can send you is the language of the archaeological easement that is put onto the land deed. And the language, though, however, can be modified. And then the intent of this program is not to, you know, penalize or to, you know, limit what somebody can do. So we have easements that, you know, read along the lines of as long as there's no ground disturbances within the upper twelve inches, you can do whatever you want. You, you know, it could be set so that you can do regular, you know, it always includes regular maintenance and plantings and, you know, other things that you may have to do just for the maintaining the property in general. But the language itself, there is nothing prescriptive about it, so we can modify it and make it whatever the town feels comfortable with.
Well, without that, I can't, I can't vote, but it's certainly something worth considering.
Sure.
We're actually supposed to be taking time. One challenge is that I think Stefan needs a master's program. And he's available right now for a semester. And I don't know, maybe Kathy or Stefan can tell us, what are your timelines? Because your your Shippo meets monthly. And I don't know when Stefan would need an answer to undertake this project.
Both on mute. Sorry. So I was hoping to get this capstone project started in the fall. But of course, I really believe in this project. I have had some time to think about it and I really think that you guys have something special here in the mill site. And to be able to help bring another archaeological preserve to the state would be amazing. So my timeframe is not a huge rush. I would prefer to get this started for the fall semester, but I understand that things take time and you all need time to fully see what exactly it is you're getting into. So I understand that. And just want to make sure that, you know, that my services are here even after the fact. If I move on to something else for my capstone, I do work for Preservation Connecticut, a statewide nonprofit. And our mission is to help preserve the history in the state. So even if it wasn't in a capacity as a student, as a circuit rider with Preservation Connecticut, I would love to help you guys out in the future if you should decide to wait on this.
And I say Kathy, what would it take for you to show us exactly the language of the easement that you, is that something like you would email it?
Could email it to you right now if you wanted.
Okay. And Lisa, if you want to walk the site.
I'd like to know what we're, yeah, and and I would, I'd be happy to. Don't know if I'm going to do it in the next couple of weeks because we're buried and tired. But, yeah, I would like the information, I could get it done by the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we're missing a golden opportunity here. And I you know, I'm not clear as to what action was planned for today to discussion to join the Connecticut State Archaeological State Preservation Program. Yeah, I mean, is there a way to, just to get the ball rolling is the least give Stefan permission to proceed.
And while we're doing that, I know just because of the involvement and expertise, I will call a couple of people. So Ingrid, have your hand up.
Yes, I think so. My question may have been covered, but my question really had to do with the long term use of the site. And and I think you asked what percentage of the site would be presumably part of the archaeological preserve? And we don't know yet, basically. But I thought the reason we wanted this property was also for recreational purposes. And my question is, to what extent will public recreation and what type of public recreation will be allowable adjacent to or in a predominantly archaeological preserve? And that's a real concern because it's really hard to keep people away from there, given that it's right next to the trail. And, you know, there are folks who will be very curious about seeing what's going on. And you're going to get loads of visitors, whether you want them or not, or have keep out signs or not. And this is a concern.
Yeah, I think if we want as many visitors as we can, yeah, but I, yes.
And so I think I can address some of your points here. Part of the benefits of the preserve program is that it creates the signage that, you know, more people dental impacts the site, but it also doesn't discourage people from going around the site. It actually, I wouldn't hurt people, in my opinion, to interact with archaeology and get to know their own local history. And one of the benefits of the program as well is to create a relationship between the state historic preservation office and the town. And it opens up the town to funding in relation to the preserve so that they may include the signs that have been discussed earlier. So that say you wanted to put up signs to interpret the site for the public so that they understand what they have and what's there. They can apply for funding through our office to help accomplish that goal.
A follow on question is, once the preserve is created, what responsibilities will the state have to ensure that people don't go for it? Because we know the metal detectionist community is very anxious to discover what what's there. So how do you keep that intact? Is it just by the honor code? Or are there actually policing responsibilities that the state has?
Well, Kathy can take more from this than I can, but it does, but in all the thirty seven preserves we have, we have not had an issue with anyone looting the site once it's become preserved. It does create a deterrent factor, just having a signage there. And but I think I think Kathy can speak to the deterrent factor more early than I can.
Yeah, so I'll first say in terms of recreation, our list of preserves includes about a dozen that are on Connecticut State Park property right now. And so unless you stop to look at the signage, you may not even have even known that you are recreating right on top of an archaeological site. So in terms of recreation, passive use, even some active use of these properties. Again, this is, this is not meant to hinder the town and how it wants to use its property. It's just meant to be able to highlight one component of its history, but do it in a way where the site doesn't get harmed. And so to Corey's point, yeah, and the entire time that I've been here and in my predecessor with the preserve program, we've never had a problem of looting, which is common on archaeological sites throughout the state. So I think having the preserve sign is that up, that is up, is a deterrent. But I also think the stronger deterrent is you create stewardship. When people know about important resources in their town and they start to care about them, they watch after them better than they would if they didn't know. So I would never want the, the purpose of this program is to share it with the community, not to create a sectioned off area of land that says nobody can go here. That, I mean, in some ways, maybe the word preserve is, you know, kind of sends a different connotation to what it's really about. It's really more about sharing the interest of the site. There is no policing requirements. We don't police it. However, you know, what we can do is this is where you can tap into funding from our office once your list is a preserve. If you found that you really had trouble with metal detectors, for example, maybe what we can do is set up programs one day a year where metal detectorists come out and work with archaeologists. We could put up additional deterrents such as game cameras, if that's the way the town wanted to go. So it's really more about a relationship of working with the town than the state saying, no, you can't do this or that. Does that answer your question?
Amy. She's shaking her head yes, so we're gonna, we're gonna say yes.
And, you know, at a high level, yes, at a high level, yeah.
Well, I mean, honestly, Ingrid, you know, somebody put a beautiful bench up at Park and, you know, a year later it scratched, the bronze is scratched out. I mean, there's always the potential, no matter where. So I get that, but at least we can go to the state and say, hey, we need different signs and stuff because we're not policing it, we don't have that kind of ability. And yet we want people to be able to enjoy this, even repurpose the signs or something, whether they do or not. I'm going to ask you, go ahead.
And Donick, one of three like I envision this site as a destination on the rail train. And that will help with Columbia on the map. So that people will say, why don't we take Ryan on the on the Hop River train? We can stop and visit the archaeological site after it's all done, fixed up. And you can picnic there. You know, I don't envision too many people putting kayaks in there. They could, but there's a lot of rocks in that river.
A lot of water in the spring too. We have I get it. And I'm looking at the list of these up here. I guess I've been to
and and get launched and main roads, you know? And it could, it couldn't help the the Hot River Trail recognition, that's what looks clutchy. And as far as this, we acquired this as an open space set.
Yeah. You know. We hope it would be canceled and
Right, and so you can't build it here. Oh, you, you need to do fast work in the ocean. So it will all fit together very nice. And it's worrying thanks to the train.
Yes.
That's why I have two more things real quickly. So I've been talking to two of the neighbors, Kevin, who lives in the big house right over the bridge, who's had thirty years of interest in that property and knows all about it, who cares about it? And the owner of the tenant house is right opposite the entrance, which is part of the old mill house. He's, I was talking to him yesterday, he's all excited about it. So there's two eyes right on the ground, you know? So therefore, they'll keep an eye on it. Hardly to try to police this. And the other thing is, I just want to mention, they mentioned signage grants, but there's also money for other things that we really sound we want to pay for, such as ground penetrating radar to try to map what's underground, survey above ground, we lay out a grid and map finds and so on. And what I really want is a metallurgist to look at all the flags there from the iron works and tell me what's what. So these are all specialty people that you might get funding for through their grants. But again, the town and Stefan's been being careful of that one. So we don't really have to do that extra work or pay that extra money.
I think I, I like everything that you're saying, I get it. I guess my concern is I want you to guarantee me. I guess my concern is, I want you to guarantee that this meadow area here that floods the water is open to people to use that, even when they're doing their archaeological surveying day.
Well, if you can come with um, Linda or separately, you know, be happy to walk you through and show you all the spots and whatever you're gonna be able to get in there and
I, I have been down, Mark and I went down there last year. I mean, it, it's a beautiful spot.
Right, but now there's a bylaws that goes around the archaeological site and people can get from the park here by the road directly to that river without and bringing everything that might be archaeological.
Yes, Amber.
I have a practical question um, having to do with the intending bridge construction um, and the impact of any work that you intend for the site. So that's the other thing, is that there will be a new bridge. And to what extent will that impact uh, the site? Uh, and the timeline for whatever uh, work you intend to do?
Well, since it's, we're not doing the work and it's already pretty much laid out the bridge.
It's designed, designed the bridge. Big, yeah.
It, it could cause some staging.
The stage will be on the country side, there's no room on our side. We're the high side, country's the lower side and
So it shouldn't really have any
No, and our little park here, we have, you know, four cars, so it's not like it's a legal parking lot. We're gonna put up a gate, just to keep people driving in, a farm gate. But it's um, I, I had Chipo, Kathy and Cory came in, um, with Anne and Joan, and we all talked about this. I didn't see any downside, it seemed like there's only positive things. And I know it led to just Joan, um, this would be quite a project for her to undertake without the assistance of Chipo and now possibly Stefan to help find grant money to make this an asset. Right now, I don't think any of this harms our goals of uh, fishing, bird watching, camping, and just enjoying sitting with your feet in the river. So everything, all that is to the right, everything that was totally overgrown, that was not even pretty get to until Joan started clearing, is, is all that we're the ones. So they don't seem to interact at all.
Lisa, I'm coming back to you. Honestly, I'm, I'm kind of ready to move on this, so um
I, I, I will abstain. I won't vote on it. Because I don't, without the actual language and the easement and looking at all that, I don't I, I personally myself can't vote for it or against it. I'm, I don't have enough information, that's all.
Could I just make one recommendation? And I think somebody mentioned this. Is, I mean, I certainly can allow Stefan to proceed and put everything together. And when the town sees it, maybe you do a separate vote to move it forward as a preserve at that time. Because nothing happens to what Stefan would put together until our council votes on it and makes that designation.
Listen, I don't wanna, honestly, I, I appreciate that. I don't wanna hold up Stefan as any longer than is necessary. I mean, let's get him cracking on it if we're gonna do it. But I wanna make sure people are happy and we, we understand it, so can we but Lisa, you're not gonna be able to walk it for a couple of weeks?
I know, I said I could do it by the next meeting. And, and if he wants to start putting things together and that kind of thing, I just don't want to have the town sign anything that I'm saying, yeah, go ahead and sign it, that's an in perpetuity kind of thing that I haven't seen. It's like signing a contract that I haven't read.
Yes.
Well, I was just gonna say, as you can defer that decision without pulling Stefan up, as long as the town creates a committee or some group is designated as his, I guess, sponsor, uh, what do you call it?
Uh, my uh, community partner, the capstone asks for a community partner.
Start putting this up before his committee, his graduate school supervisor. You know, what's in place. And so he needs to say, yes, the town is creating a group that I can work with. So that's probably the first step, as opposed to the secondary step.
Is it called a Hop River Mills Committee?
No, I think that's what we
Or community partner? Well, I thought we need a community committee.
Yes, we need a community partner. And then if you were, start with master plan, you can start on getting state historic designation and come up with the wording that you all may want to see before you sign onto the project.
Now I'm looking at the motion that's in front of me, I'm not even sure if this is correct. Hop River Mills Community Committee, is that what you're saying?
So right now, the second part of the motion that, from our meeting, I have uh, I moved authorize the creation of the Hop River Mills Committee and apply for grant funding through the State Historic Preservation Office to create a master plan with the Central Connecticut State University Capstone Pro Project. So that's not quite correct now, if we don't. Is that jumping the gun because we're not actually um, designated as a state archaeological preserve yet?
Is there any reason why we can't simply authorize Stefan to proceed?
No, I, I don't accept it, John threw a kind of rejection there, saying we need a committee before he can proceed.
He can, he can wait until you have your two weeks meeting and have a vote. But I'm saying, the creation of the preserve is actually gonna take a year before it happens. They have to get state designation first, you know, they said they have to have the historic records, it should be a resource study, the property. All those things can begin before the town makes its final decision. So you would just divide that in half and vote on the second half now. And after uh, everyone's satisfied as to what would be mandatory state reserve.
Kathy, can you help us with the motion? You need to have Stefan begin this together.
Um, yeah, I, so I would leave our name out of it because at this point, it's not like you're going for the, the preserve designation, we can deal with that later. But what I would say is you are um, I mean, besides setting up the committee, you're authorizing Stefan to prepare documentation of the Hop River Mills sites to fulfill the requirements.
Stefan, can you just, we'll see you in two weeks, can you just have it ready for us and we'll be ready to go?
You got it, boss. Sounds good.
I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is how government works sometimes. Be ready to go in two weeks, we're all gonna walk the site if we want to, we'll be ready to bring you on board in two weeks if we love the idea.
That sounds perfect to me.
Thank you so much.
No worries, I totally understand.
Lisa, fine, I mean, I've seen it, that's why I'm okay with it.
I've seen it like three or four times.
All right, thank you. So put it on the docket for the next meeting, please, and we may, we'll learn on the motion. The correct motion, what we need correct. We covered the Columbia Lake and beach stuff on marine patrol yours. Uh, appointments to resignation, the resignation of John Burrell from Lake Management. I moved to accept the resignation of John Burrell from Lake Management Advisory Commission. John has some things going on in his life and Lake Management not a long time. But he's decided to take care of things that he needs to personally and has uh, asked to be to step down, so any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, town administration report.
All right, the uh, rector has resigned. And um, as Carmen has mentioned, there's been quite a bit of emailing and discussions on um, whether we have properly trained our gate monitors and marine patrol um, to handle keeping the residents safe and the policies and procedures followed uh, by the voters and uh, people trying to enter the lake. So um, Mary Rokel and I have been working, uh, we've created um, two bushes. Some of this all did exist uh, with marine patrol, like, oh, we just tweaked it and highlighted some of the major things we wanted to make sure were there. I've started actually walking down and, and reviewing these procedures with the gate monitors and marine patrol, we're going to keep doing that. Um, I've been talking to um, two of our more senior marine patrol officers, John Marshall and um, um, Brian Ball, uh, to also help with the training. Uh, I've been communication on my finding, uh, we've had some issues come up that we were concerned were not proper. We found the state regulations that proved it and marine patrol was instructed in the um, people that were improperly running the jet skis, uh, with children in front of them, you know, that have been spoken to and showed the state statute that they were um, threatened with a marine regulation. So I think we're approving, we, we have not hired a new rector. Uh, but in the meantime, we're not waiting for that to try to make things uh, safer. And we clearly now, I believe, have the gate monitors keeping the gate shut at all times so that no one can get into the lake without uh, being inspected. Where um, we also highlighted that every time a boat goes in, even if you know them, even if they have a key, that they have to be inspected, they have to be asked, have you been in other, any other body of water? Before you come into the family lake and make sure that they're clear on uh, the proper procedures between the boat, if they see any any live vegetation at all on anything that travel the boat there to turn the boat away. Uh, so I'm confident that everything will pull together and will improve this season. But I can rest assured that by next season, when we start over, um, it, it'll be run different. So I don't know if that answered your questions, Carmen, or if you want to be more specific.
Well, I'm not sure why.
I'm not sure why they're speaking.
Oh, sorry. Can I speak?
Yes. Please.
As you look at what you're doing for the future, having the recreation director be the supervisor doesn't appear to work very well. And I'm not sure if you did that to try to save money. But you put in charge of the marine patrol, someone who knew nothing about boating. And you should not do that again. So if, if we're just gonna repeat this cycle, powering a rector and putting the rector in charge of the marine patrol, who has, should have multiple other things to do, then we're gonna end up creating the same cycle that we've created this year. And I, when I live right there, I watch them. We have people coming down there with carloads of kayaks. Nobody ever questions them. Nobody ever asks them. Nobody ever looks at the bottom of the kayaks. My guess is a lot of them aren't even Columbia residents. But as you look to the future, please don't I don't get the point of why you try to do that with a rector.
Because we trusted our rector. We trusted them to do the job that they said that they would do. That they sit in that office and on the cameras and they're notified, should be notified by the lifeguard to somebody that's at the gate, that they would walk out there and take a look at things. That's what they were supposed to do.
They're gone, if they're at the rec park, or if they're at the basketball place, then they're not available.
I'm, I'm gonna answer your question, I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm just gonna answer your question. There's two people down there at all times in that office. If one is away, the other one should be able to be there and do the job. That's designed how it's supposed to, again.
You've got two people sitting there who don't know anything about boating.
I, I
One's gone, I realize that, but the one that's left
But they don't, they, they should have been trained better, I agree. But it's not that hard to look at the bottom of a kayak, is it? And they don't even have to know which end of the kayak goes first. It's not that tough to look at, to look and look for vegetation and to look at the paperwork. They should have been trained better, I get it. I'm talking with Mark and I'm reading the emails that are going out there. People think I don't love this lake, they're nuts. We're gonna get it right, or I'll be down there every day. I'm, Carmen, I'm not kidding, and the people on the lake aren't gonna like it. Because some of the people who live on the lake, they take advantage of everybody going around and they do what they want.
Absolutely.
They think it's above them, and it's not going to be above that.
But if you have a marine control officer in a boat that's out there when they're doing it and stops them, it won't take long if, if some of them stop.
You know from sitting here, you're wrong. They whine and they call here, the boat patrol is mean to me, and he was disrespectful. And the next thing you know, we're training out people, changing out the boat patrol people. We either have faith in the people down there when we train them correctly, or don't bother having them. Let the people on the lake do their own patrol. Cause that's what's happening now, I've got two factions fighting. I pull them over, they don't like it. They have a siren, I don't like it. It's just a difficult job to appease everybody.
But you have to accept the bad that goes with the good. You can save money, you can appease the one that doesn't like the sirens or doesn't like the lights or whatever, but eventually it'll cost you a hell of a lot more money to run that, and when you have to start cleaning up the lake, when you have an accident out there, it's waiting to happen. I agree with you, there are people on that lake that are violating the rules and the regulations. And they do it because there's no one out there standing up to them. And you can't be good guy to everybody. You have to bite the bullet and pick a sign.
Thank you for your comments.
Missed everything else, okay. Joshua Stern is our present work clerk, he's been doing the six months. He works down in the ladies department, he's also been trained as a floater to help um, replace Jen when she was on vacation. He got good feedback from both Rick Nasser, uh, and his own chairman. And we've got great feedback from employees he works with. And uh, we've had no problems with Josh, so I'm just here to, he's, he's part-time, so it does not require a vote in the board, but just said, I gave him a good review and we're happy to keep working with Josh as a six-month probation. Um, also, ten point three, the first day celebration. If, the school is gonna try to do a first day celebration at Rec Park on August twenty ninth, but they just couldn't get organized quick enough, so I just talked to Maria, um, our superintendent today. And she'd like to go back to the October twenty second date that we originally talked about for a, I think it won't be a first day celebration, but a celebration with the schoolchildren, teachers. And also um, to acknowledge everyone who's uh, putting so much work to make Rec Park what it is right now. So um, we'll keep you informed as we, we keep working on those plans. And I, I'll explain it. Also, there was um, Beth La, I just wanted to tell you that we've gotten complaints on the old Willman Grove section and Cherry Valley uh, power outages. Uh, quite a few, they're due to trees and limbs falling on the wires. So uh, Beth La reached out to our liaison with EverSource and they agreed to make that a priority to clear at least twenty-five trees at their expense. Uh, they just asked if our help works could help remove the wood as we resolve that and could help coordinate that effort. So that'll, that'll be a savings in the long run for them to do that stretch. If you drive down this stretch over, you know, that is So that'll, that'll be a savings in the long run for them to get the last stretch. If you drive down that stretch over, it is. Pretty young. From all the trees. So I wanted to be aware of that. And also, we just received our. First installment of our second half of our ARPA payments. So we have two hundred seventy three thousand five hundred fifty five dollars and, um. Actually. Yes, I, I think, I looked at the memo, it looks like it's two hundred seventy thousand, but it's a portion of the eight hundred thousand we're expecting. So that's in our banking account now. And that's all I have, Steve. Also, my father's board is in the back of the box. And look at.
There's some reports on it that's been, uh, put out there. A lot of factors.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight one. If I could, Stephen, there was a real nice one from, um, David Ram and, uh, Inger is here. Uh, she was mentioned. Uh, there was, oh. Thank you for the warm and really well done ceremony, accepting the artwork from the Ram family honoring my mom. Uh, and I wanted to thank also Jen and Inger for really pulling that whole celebration together. Very nice. And, um, he knows the cats, cat chemists are very touched. And, um, they also donate the winter scene above. The other scene of a small game at that service. And also from the town of Heber. And then the town manager sent us a really nice note, uh, thanking our fire department for the mutual aid assistance provided during the incident where Ted's IGA had a fire. And, um, members of fire department were not only courageous in their duties, but they conducted themselves very professionally and amounted to the event. Your town should be proud of the services that these individuals provided and were fortunate to have entered into a mutually aid agreement with the company. And we can ever reciprocate, please call in for any help. But if you, let's hope we never have to call. I agree. Okay. Also, Deanne Johnson, uh, maintainer, got a, a real nice note from Inger, uh, for pulling the boiler on the history place. Uh, it was a big project and it died out because it was not working. Did not need to be in there. I mean, from electric heaters in the sink. That's now all.
We have no transfers. Uh, we do have a refund. I need to accept the refund for the hundred seventy seven dollars and two seven cents to, uh. Casiquas, to Casiqua. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And payment of bills. I move to approve the payment of bills totaling ninety five thousand four hundred eighty seven dollars and fifty one cents, consisting of twenty one point two regular, twenty two point three emergency. Or two twenty three regular credit card and their checks. Any discussion?
I had the one on the TRC, professional services for Columbia Lake. I don't, I, you know, I've seen it a couple of times, I'm sure, but what's that for?
Uh, that is the limonologist that our previous limonologist company used. Uh, we are now on a contract, so that was their last lake inspection and their final report of the lake. Uh, now we're gonna jump to a new contract starting July one.
Did we, did we receive or pay out a tax refund of five thousand dollars?
That was, um, it was a, a mistake withdrawal from the trust account and we had to, um. Give the money back because it came out of the wrong account. It was a, I believe it was a mistake from Western Bank, yes. The Western Bank made a mistake, withdrew from the person's trust account to pay their taxes instead of their checking, uh, whatever.
Okay, so we paid them back?
Yes.
And now are we getting the five, five thousand from the regular?
Yes.
That has personally involved with the tax collector to fix the mess up. Want to tell me about the generator?
Yes, so it's, it's on order for the senior center. Yeah, we're not done. We still have to, uh, get some further quotes on propane, but the actual generators are.
Do you have a budget?
The, uh, amount we have to ARPA is not enough. We will have to go back and add some more. So the generator came in, where the generator itself was set twenty five thousand, it's twenty nine. But that's with all the electrical. We're gonna also need some propane hooked up to.
Any discussion? All those in favor of paying the bills?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Audience and citizen. Check the chat, anything? Nope. Okay, thank you. Board member comments.
I do have one because I have to, um. So we want to do the sustainable Connecticut thing that we were in last week. And then this week I see that we spent four thousand dollars, yeah, on grub control. And. There is a better way. And I've been doing it forever and I was always told I couldn't do it and I do it anyway. Northeast Organic Farmers Association does have an organic land care online course for four hundred dollars. If we wanted to sponsor one of our people to take the course and. When you kill grubs, you kill all the bad grubs and the good grubs to go with it, including firefly and larvae. Which are great predators that eat other grubs. So I don't know. I, I have a real problem with. Having grub control poisons put on the. Grass that our children are playing on. Just saying.
Lisa, can you get us some information on that course and we'll look into it, please?
I surely can.
Thank you.
They just finally found it. They just started back up again.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'm going to suspend the board selection meeting and as we move into executive session.
Seven fifty.
And I ask, uh, Mark Walters to remain behind. Session. And eight twenty four. We will resume the board selection meeting and now I move to adjourn. Board selection meeting at eight twenty five. All those in favor?
Hi.